We will call this November 11th, 2019 workshop meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board to order. First, thank you all for joining us on this beautiful Indiana evening. Second, we would like to thank and acknowledge any veterans or current service members we have joining us on this Veterans Day. And if there are any in the audience, I ask you to rise so we could thank you for your service. No? All right. Well, we'll thank our veterans anyways, and then I'll have to, well, I'll have to ask for real call before the pledge. Madam Secretary.
Board member Leida Spanberg is absent tonight, and all other board members are here.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge by rising. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, the first item on the agenda, we have a very special presentation, or a number of presentations, to acknowledge the artwork that is decorating our boardroom. Before we start, I'd like to let everybody know that when we are done with the presentation, we will take a group photo at that time. Parents can also take a photo of the group. Since it is a school night, we understand that you may not want to stay for our meeting, and the weather's another excuse. However, there is a very interesting topic, time of school day, so if you can stay, I'd encourage you to stay. And I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Well, this evening, I am so excited to be able to honor our young artists. And you can see their work behind us here, and this will be in our boardroom for the next six months. And we're very fortunate that we have such artistic students in our, in Carmel Clay Schools that can decorate our boardroom for us. Before I call up our young artists, I'd first like to thank our principals and our art teachers for coming out tonight and supporting their young artists, and our art teachers for really instilling the love of art for all of our students. So if you are an art teacher or a principal, if you could please stand to be recognized. Thank you. And so when I call your name, if you would, Dr. Bearsford has a certificate for you, so you can come and shake his hand. And then you can come across here and shake each of the board members' hands as well, because they would like to congratulate you. Our first young artist is Elise Castor, a fifth grade student from Carmel Elementary. Chloe Sun, a sophomore from Carmel High School. Ella Marty, an eighth grade student from Carmel Middle School. Genevieve Yunker, a second grade student from Cherry Tree Elementary. Cohen Odo, a sixth grade student from Clay Middle School. Lucas Lee, a third grade student from College Wood. Katoko Yamada, a sixth grade student from Creekside Elementary, or Creekside Middle Annie Gonzalez-Barratt, a first grade student from Forestale. Will Lubkey, a third grade student from Mohawk Hill. Madeline Holbrook, a fifth grade student from Orchard Park. Savannah Rohin, a first grade student from Prairie Trace. Addison Sullivan, a fifth grade student from Smokey Row. Carter Hesley, a fifth grade student from Town Meadow. Maddie Cannon, a fourth grade student from West Clay. And Annabelle Millis, a third grade student from Woodbrook. Congratulations to all of our young artists. Let's give them one more hand.
Let's get our picture taken.
I'm gonna get a group picture, guys, so. You're gonna get in the back. You're gonna get in the back. You're in the back. You'll be in the back. You guys wanna go forward a little bit? Take one, two, three. And then I'll take the group photo, and then, parents, you guys can take the group photo as well. Hop around. One, two, three. All right, here. Go ahead. You guys can come up here, too. One, two, three. All right, congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, well. Now you know I wouldn't have taken when we finished it, right? Yeah, look at the middle, actually. That means it's nice when four hang up the ground.
It's on the bottom. Yeah.
One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Congrats again. Be safe, guys, driving home.
Okay. You want one? Just one?
Yeah, we can do it. One, two. All right, now I'll get one just for you. Just get over a little bit. There you go.
Okay. All right, so your mom wants one.
Take it easy, Nick.
Awesome. Thank you.
She was asking for a hug.
Well, it's beautiful. I just, yeah, just get to pick. It's up to me. Yeah, but this one stood out to me. It's not a million, but a lot.
Yeah, and this one's a truffle.
It's so lovely. It's supposed to be, and I thought, and I thought.
It pulled it out of the hair.
All right, next on the agenda, we have consent. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the personnel report, claims, and payroll. May I have a motion to approve consent, please?
移到
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor of approving consent as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries, but I will turn the floor over to Dr. Bearsford to make a presentation about personnel.
Hey, it's my great pleasure to introduce Dr. Tom O'Stryke to you. He's there in the front row there with his son Colin and wife Allison. And through a unanimous process, and a very competitive process, I'll add, he was the top pick out of a very competitive pool to serve as our new Assistant Superintendent of Staff and Student Services. Just let me tell you a little bit about Dr. O'Stryke. He will be, first off, the position, he will be responsible for overseeing the recruitment, retention, talent development of all CCS employees. His role will include working with benefits, compensation, general care, and just the support of our staff. Now, along with that, he's also going to serve as a Student Services Department, overseeing that, which includes school safety, as you know, and mental health, and other areas related to supporting students. So he's going to be the top support guy in the district. And he brings with him a wealth of experience. He's been in education for 20 years, in public education, and his first step into education was at Carmel High School as a student teacher. So he's come back home to the motherland, and so we welcome him back. He's most recently served in Washington Township as Assistant Superintendent, and he's been working currently in a lot of different parts of the daily operations of the district, and looking over a variety of departments like safety and security, technology, grants assessment, special services, and student support programs. Now, prior to that, though, he spent quite a few years, and is where I got to know him pretty well, as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. So he's led recruitment, hiring, evaluation, benefits, service programs for over 1,600 employees there. So he's, he's got experience in the big school system setting, which really gave him, you know, a lot of credibility with the, with the committee. And he got his bachelor's degree in music education at Butler University, so he's a dog, so, you know, you can't argue with a Butler Bulldog there. And then he got his master's degree in school administration, doctorate of education, educational leadership, with a minor in curriculum instruction from Indiana University, which I believe is the university south of Indianapolis, down that way a little bit. That's a pretty good one, I hear. He was the Washington Township Administrator of the Year in 2014. So we just couldn't be happier to add Tom to our team, and I think he's going to be a perfect fit for our administrative team, and I'm sure he's going to carry on the great work that Dr. Stefanoff has got going here, and it'll only take us to higher ground. So I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Tom O'Stryke. Dr. O'Stryke, anything you want to tell the board?
Sure.
First impressions, you know? Yes, we could.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much. I'm very honored to be here tonight to be your Assistant Superintendent of Staff and Student Services. I'm very excited to join and work with our teachers, and our administrators, and our staff, as well as working with the leadership team here in Carmel Clay Schools. I'm most excited to get to know everybody. So I have lots of colleagues that are here in Carmel that I look forward to reconnecting with, and I certainly look forward to getting to know all of our staff, and our families, and our students throughout the Carmel Clay community. So thank you for your trust in me, and I look forward to joining you right after the New Year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. O'Stryke, and family for joining us and becoming part of the Carmel Family. Next on the, and feel free, you don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting either. Next on the agenda, we have one action item, permission to advertise for a public hearing on additional appropriation. To schedule a public hearing for November 25th, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Yes, we're recommending an additional appropriation of 2.7 million for our education fund and $800,000 for the referendum fund. The 2019 budget was built in the summer of 2018, and as the board knows, a lot of things have happened since then. Both our expenses have gone up because our enrollment went up a total of about 300 students from what we assumed back in the summer of '18. So that brought additional revenue, and of course, required additional staff as well. And so this increase is primarily in the area of staff as well as benefits. So between that and ultimately our salary increases, fortunately, were higher than what we had budgeted for in the summer of '18. And so between the two of those, we'll need some additional appropriation. This has no impact on our financial position, and certainly no impact on taxes. It's just appropriating funds that we already have, so that we'll have, be able to pay out the expenses between now and the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve permission to advertise for a public hearing on additional appropriation?
移到
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Lynn, for the second. Is there any questions or discussions for Pam?
Yes, I was just excited because I haven't seen us increase by 300 students in quite a while, so that's pretty neat.
Yeah, well, we were up about 100 in that first year, and then most, this fall, we're up about 200 more than what we had projected. So that's good news for us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So all in favor of permission to advertise for a public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the workshop topic, which is the School Day Report. Dr. Bearsford.
Yeah, if you'd like to, we'd like to relocate to our tables up here, and we can start the workshop. And we're going to spend some time going over the study that we did last, at the end of last year, and just have a little bit of discussion about what we, where our findings have been.
She's getting up. Okay. No?
We'll get started, and Colin's going to deliver some microphones as we go. I apologize for the mix-up there.
You're building anticipation.
Pardon?
You're building anticipation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Colin, I also, I'm not up on the screen here. Let's see it. It's good on the laptop.
It is on the laptop. Okay, go open it up on the laptop.
There. There we go. Now we're clicking. Let me do it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So the topic of today in the workshop is to go over our, the feedback that we received. If you remember, back in the late spring, we did a video and explained a lot of information, shared a lot of information with our community, with our staff, about some possible changes in the School Day, and a lot of the research behind those changes. A lot of this came out of, again, out of the program review of, that was done prior to my, me arriving. So this is another one of the projects that we were kind of looking at. And so what we were able to do is kind of, wanted to do is to share this, this feedback with you, and then have a little bit of discussion. The purpose of tonight is for discussion only. We're not making a recommendation tonight. But really wanted to share this information with you, and get your feedback, and then add that feedback to some, to all the information in order to make a recommendation to you, either the, at our next board meeting here in November, or maybe the one in December, depending on, you know, how much work we need to do between then and now. So to get started, I'll tell you just a little bit about the feedback that we received itself, which was a lot. We sent it out to parents. We had a parent, and we had an elementary video and a secondary video, and we had 1,362 respondents from the elementary school side of it, and that was the parents. And then for the secondary school side, we had 1,582 respondents, so a pretty decent number of respondents in my, at least in my history. Staff-wise, we had 202 respondents from the elementary side of life, and that was, that would represent about 43% of the elementary staff. And then with the secondary, we had 221, which represents about 42% of the secondary staff, so pretty good turnout on the staff side as well. So that took us to a grand total of 3,367 respondents that took the time to watch the videos and then give us some feedback. That what we, we did not, the instrument that they had to fill out to give us our feedback was not real directed. It was very open-ended. It did not ask anyone to vote. It just asked about, what do you think about this information? What are its positives? What are negatives? What are your concerns? What do you, what do you think about it? And so that's the basics of the gathering of the information. So really, what happened then was what we'd call like a more ethnographic kind of a study, where we were just looking at the results that we got and developed themes out of the feedback that we got. So we've got to throw some kudos out to Dr. Rhonda Peterson here. She went through the 3,367 responses that we got, which each one had multiple responses in it. So it was thousands and thousands of responses, and she did the tedious work of going through and seeing what kind of responses we received. So kudos to her and to Dr. Dudley. They're, her and her team did a wonderful job of taking all that data and breaking it down into some workable information that we can present to you tonight. So we'll start with the elementary parent feedback, and this is just for data nerds like me, but we're kind of looking at what's percentages from the different schools, and you can see that the staff percentages were hovering right around that 20% for the most part, average, for each school. So here was a question. It was, it says, just simply, provide feedback on extending the elementary School Day by approximately 30 minutes for the 2021 school year. And then, just a, just a little bit of information, we'd start about 8 o'clock, and then the day would end about 3 o'clock. And then what we, the way we determined supported and did not support was if the only thing you said in your response was positive, we, the assumption was that you were supportive of it. And then if the only thing that was in your responses was negative, then you were not supportive of it. And so that's just kind of the easy ground rules of that. So that gives you some information about the numbers, and it was pretty well-supported by elementary parents. So one of the questions was always, you know, how would that extra time be used? And what we had shared in the videos, maybe additional recess time, that we would add some wind time, what I need time, class means promote student collaboration, inquiry, STEAM, and social-emotional learning activities. So a lot of the conversation we had around this is that our, our School Day being as short as it is, is that a lot of the instruction, everything that goes on, is very compacted, and there's not a lot of time for, just to breathe sometimes. So part of it would be to allow that little extra bit of time, and so that teachers and students could have a little more downtime during the day. Not necessarily downtime, but different activities where they could decompress a little bit. So what would that look like? So a lot of, the big question was, was like, what would the daily schedule look like? So Amy worked with the principals and went through a lot of different scenarios, and this is kind of what we were looking at. At the current elementary day, as you can see, it's 390 total minutes. And then you can look, there's 325 minutes of instruction, 30 minutes of lunch, 15 minutes of recess, and then about 20 minutes of, throughout the day, when you're transitioning from specials and lunch and different things. The proposed elementary day would be 420 minutes, so there's that extra 30. And the 340 minutes of instruction with literacy, math, science, social studies. But then we also could add in inquiry, STEAM, social-emotional learning, a lot of the things that we've had on that previous slide, as other, things that we could do with that extra 15 minutes. Then it'd be 30 minutes of lunch. We'd be adding 15 minutes to recess, a 30-minute recess time, and again, that 20 minutes of transition time between the different things throughout the day. So that's, that's kind of the basics of it. But if you look into that 340 minutes, we're actually giving the teachers a choice, you know, to use that time as they see fit, and what they need. And I think that's, you know, where that key point is, where we're talking about decompressing the day a little bit. So here's some of the comments, and what I'm going to do is kind of give pros and cons in each one of these. And each one of these, when they made the list, that means that there was multiple people that said something like that or exactly like that. And so that's where these became more common themes in gathering the data. So the first one was this strong support for the additional time being unstructured play or recess. We had a lot of, what do you call it? Many conditional statements. I'm for this if, you know, recess, you know, if we get more recess. And so the recess was mentioned in 368 responses, and play was mentioned in 241 responses. So there's a lot of, a lot of interest in getting more time for unstructured play and that recess time. And then, of course, SEL was very popular, and continues to be, and I think, I think a lot of us all believe that that's time we'll spend, that we spend in social-emotional learning. And then the whole promotion of overall health and wellness movement, SEL morning meetings. So it's kind of that combo of mental health and physical activity, and then, and then, of course, all the different things we could do with a little more time, like Genius Hour and STEM, and different inquiry-based type things. Some of the concerns, some of the drawbacks. One is a concern, will teachers, teachers not be compensated for this? Sometimes felt the time would be spent, better spent with parents at home. If they had folks at home, they could be with. Some feel the School Day is long enough, and then concerned that extending time would be a problem if, you know, we had a bunch of smote, snow days, and we had to add time to that, and that sort of thing. So that was one. And then, and then interference with any kind of after-school activities students might have. So general comments were kind of, you know, not one side or the other, but just some themes that kicked up that weren't really pro or con. And we saw homework, or homework policy, or reducing homework, and several different responses on several different parts of this, the feedbacks experience we had here. Considering movement during inclement weather days, so that was just like to have more physical activity when kids are in the building. And then, just a, just a little bit of information. We'd start about eight o'clock and, and then the day would end about three o'clock. And then what we, the way we determined supported and did not support was if the only thing you said in your response was positive, we, the assumption was that you were supportive of it. And then if the only thing that was in your responses was negative, then you were not supportive of it. And so that's just kind of the, the easy ground rules of that. So that gives you some information about the, the numbers. And it was pretty well-supported by, by elementary parents. So, one of the questions was always, you know, how would that extra time be used? And what we had shared in the videos, maybe additional recess time, that we would add some when time, what I need time, class means promote student collaboration, inquiry, STEAM, and social-emotional learning activities. So a lot of the conversation we had around this is that our, our school day being as short as it is, is that a lot of the, the instruction, everything that goes on is very compacted, and there's not a lot of time for, just to breathe sometimes. So part of it would be to, to allow that little extra bit of time and so that, that teachers and students could have a little more downtime during the day. Not necessarily downtime, but different activities where they could decompress a little bit. So, what would that look like? So a lot of, the big question was, was like, what would the daily schedule look like? So Amy worked with the principals and went through a lot of different scenarios. And this is kind of what we were looking at. That the current elementary day, as you can see, is 390 total minutes. And then you can look, there's 325 minutes of instruction, 30 minutes of lunch, 15 minutes of recess, and then about 20 minutes of, of throughout the day when you're transitioning from specials and lunch and different things. The proposed elementary day would be 420 minutes, so there's that extra 30. And the 340 minutes of instruction with literacy, math, science, social studies. But then we also could add in inquiry, STEAM, social-emotional learning, a lot of the things that we've had on that previous slide, as, as other act, things that we could do with that extra 15 minutes. Then it'd be 30 minutes of lunch. We'd be adding 15 minutes to recess, a 30-minute recess time. And again, that 20 minutes of transition time between the different things throughout the day. So that's a, that's kind of the basics of it. But if you look into that 340 minutes, we're actually giving the teachers a choice, you know, to use that time as they see fit and, and what they need. And, and I think that's, you know, where that key point is, we're talking about decompressing the day a little bit. So here's some of the, the comments. And what I'm going to do is kind of give pros and cons in each one of these. And each one of these, when they made the list, that means that there was multiple people that said something like that or exactly like that. And so that's where these became more common themes in gathering the data. So first one was this strong support for the additional time being unstructured play or recess. We had a lot of, what do you call it? Many conditional statements. I'm for this if, you know, recess, you know, if we get more recess. And so the recess was mentioned in 368 responses, and play was mentioned in 241 responses. So there's a lot of, a lot of interest in getting more time for unstructured play and, and that recess time. And then of course, SEL was very popular and continues to be. And I think, I think a lot of us all believe that, that that's time we'll spend, that we spend in social-emotional learning. And then the whole promotion of overall health and wellness movement, SEL morning meetings. So it's kind of that combo of mental health and physical activity. And then, and then of course, all the different things we could do with a little more time, like genius hour and STEM and different inquiry-based type things. Some of the concerns, some of the drawbacks. One is a concern, will teachers, teachers not be compensated for this? Sometimes felt the time would be spent, or better spent with parents at home. If they had folks at home, they could be with. Some feel the school day is long enough and then concerned that extending time would be a, a problem if, you know, we have a bunch of smote, snow days, we had to add time to that and that sort of thing. So that was one. And then, and then interference with any kind of after-school activities students might have. So general comments were kind of, you know, not one side or the other, but just some themes that kicked up that weren't really pro or con. And we saw homework, or homework policy, or reducing homework and several different responses on several different parts of this, the feedbacks experience we had here. Considering movement during inclement weather days. So that was just like to have more physical activity when kids are in the building and not being able to go out. And then there were some, more than a few people that wanted the, the extra time to be at the end of the day. So, now, schedule-wise, that's not always possible to have everybody doing the same thing at the end of the day. But, but, and then finally, would there, would like an emphasis on STEM. So, could see some of those. And next part is what we received from teachers. So you can kind of see this, the teacher percentages of folks that, that answered the, or came back with some feedback on the, on the instrument. And pretty much the same question, you know, what would, what's your feedback? On this one, about 58% of the teachers supported and had all positive comments about the adding the time. About 29% did not support, and then approximately 12 were undecided. So if you were undecided, that meant that you said positive things and you said some negative things. So you were kind of given a little bit of each, you know, for and against in it. So, and so it's kind of hard to, you know, to quantify what that 12% is because it was kind of balanced. So, which is, we asked for feedback. We didn't ask, you know, for one side or the other. So that's fine. Benefits that came from the, the teacher instrument was it would allow more time for SEL and unstructured play, flexible scheduling would help with the already tight schedules. We've heard that a lot at the elementary level. Matter of fact, we had a lot of, when, when we had to add 10, I think we added some, like 10 minutes or something to the day. Or maybe it wasn't this last year, but before that, there was a lot of teachers that made comments that they really liked the extra time to be able to, to have some, not such a packed day. And excited about a possibility of more STEM time. Some of the drawbacks was that it might be a long day for the younger kids. That would affect after, after-school practices and activities. And then they just felt the day's fine the way it is. And then some of the general comments was asking, would prep time increase? Several noted secondary, secondary teachers have more prep time. Will after-school meetings reduce, be reduced or eliminated? More conditional statements about different types. And of course, asking some technical questions about wellness center and, and educator times. Would that be adjusted? So, so that is the elementary adding a half hour section of the responses. So I thought we might just take this in chunks. And this would be the, the first chunk would be to talk about, you know, the, adding time to the elementary day. So what, what questions might you have? Pam?
I was waiting for you.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Go ahead and structure the need.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're in a workshop setting, so just speak freely.
The question about prep time increase, would the elementary teachers receive more prep time?
Yeah. By adding the half hour alone, it was, it would not increase their prep time. Now, I'm going to go, when I go through the chunk about maybe having two, you know, twice a month having a, a late start, that would possibly increase the prep time of elementary teachers. Because the purpose of that late start piece, which I'll go over, is going to be for like professional learning communities. And right now, they have a collaboration time. And so we would not have the need for that collaboration time. So that could be converted to more prep time during the day, if that makes sense. But just by adding the 30 minutes, that, that it does not, is not going to add any potential prep time to it, at least in this structure.
Because the concern would be the secondary schools and the elementary schools will be the same.
Hours-wise, yeah.
Hours-wise. And right now, they have 90 minutes and the elementary teachers do one.
Right.
So that would be, that would be a concern. And, oh, we haven't gotten to the high school yet.
Would you, I mean, we can, I can keep going if you'd like, but I thought we might want to ask some questions specific to the 30 minutes.
The question I have is, what is the length of day compared to our neighboring districts? Are we already shorter? And if we add 30 minutes, will we be more in line?
Yeah. And the answer to that is yes. I think it was us in Zionsville, right Amy? That have the shortest elementary days in the area. And this half hour does put us more in the average range with the other districts around.
Yes, but the other districts also have additional recess time. So that's already added into their day.
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the, the structure. And that's kind of, we'd be adding some recess time to our structure of our day too.
Am I on? Am I on?
I'll find one.
Keep working, keep working.
Hi, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. So talk more about the recess. So are we thinking, as of like what the sample schedule was, of to making one longer or making two short, like two 15?
We talked about having a 30-minute recess rather than just a 15-minute recess. So it'd be twice as long.
And then on some of the questions, if you could go back and to the parent questions, could you address some of those that you know of right now? Back one more. I thought there was questions. I guess it was the more feedback.
Elementary parent, okay, here we go. So there was the benefits and...
This one, more the drawbacks.
Yeah.
So compensation for teachers?
No, teachers are compensated, you know, as, with a professional contract. So in the state, it's been several years now, disconnected hours even to the contract other than, with the, put times in for the, for herb. But, so there was, there's no plan in, in this to, to add any compensation to it.
And the next one I wanted to see if you would address was the interference with school activities. And mainly, we could just opinion for when you talk about secondary. That's mainly the one. And then also, it was the next, the previous slide, the benefits. The, one of them said, it wasn't this one, it talked about like more movement and wellness in the schools. Do we have any ideas? I'm sure that will be up to individual schools. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. Amy, Amy, you want to take a, a shot at that one? Because I do know that when, I, I don't know if that's talking about, one of the, the pieces is about indoor recess is what it sound like when the weather's not nice and, you know, what kind of movement we have during the day. You may want to talk a little bit about how elementary school is different now than it was 20 years ago, where there's a lot more movement going on.
And as Dr. Bear's first mentioned, the elementary day is very active already, where we incorporate those brain breaks. We incorporate activity throughout the day. So it's not sitting in rows, just working on your lessons. But you're really, you're collaborating, you're moving about the room, you're moving and sometimes about the building. And they do, they are those specific, I don't know if you've been in a classroom where they have brain breaks. But if you come to the next expedition, you'll have the opportunity to see that in action in, I've helped one of our elementary schools as well. But it is much more active, as well as the unstructured play outside, door recess. One of the things is how can we incorporate maybe more when it's inclement weather and we can't go out? And so how can we look at times where you can maybe use the gym when it's not being used, or the hallways that have that movement? And those are all pieces that we need to incorporate for that activity with kids having movement. Because we know their brain works better when their body is in movement as well.
And I can tell you, there's a lot more dancing going on than ever before. I've, my visits to classrooms last year and this year, it seems like we've got a, a lot of little brain breaks that have to do with dancing. So it's a lot of, a lot of fun.
And I think with that too, before I joined the board, I subbed for a year, which is in no way what a teacher does. But let me tell you, I was tired. Because those kids were not, like, I, I love that. I love that they're not sitting in their chairs. They're moving around. They're sitting on their floor. They're playing games. They're walking the hallways, listening to audiobooks. I think it is a great resource. Just a general comment, I appreciate the fact that you guys are looking at that unstructured play and that additional recess time. I do know, you know, that, that is a big concern for a lot of parents, including myself. So, thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Yes?
So first of all, I like the history that they use the, the feedback for, to see the comments from parents and the staff. I am one of the parents who do not like, who do not support extending elementary day. Because I think for kids, especially for younger kids at elementary school, the day is long enough. And when we look at this slide here, look at teachers' feedback. So about a third of teacher here did not support the idea of the extended day. For reasons could be, they are not paid more or stay longer, working longer. And from my experience, you have 15 minutes here added to a day, and even you put it in a chunk, in a block of time, it's hard for you to, still challenging too short for you to structure activities to, to do something. And I also see that on the previous slide, when you compare current schedule and the longer day, and the, and the thing you're putting here, so compared to the current schedule, so instructions are currently based on subjects, mostly on subjects. So they have, you know, language, math, social studies, science, you know, R, whatever. And then the longer day, the longer time would be used more like to develop their skills. But I feel like that the skills should be built into the subject instructions instead of coming out of its own time. So these are just my own comments. And I'd like to hear what teachers think about the longer day and how they're going to view activities. I think that's critical for us, not just because we wanted to get to add extra 15 minutes back, how are we going to utilize the 15 minutes to really give students benefits? So I think it's critical to get teachers feedback, especially for 29%, where if you compare 29% to 38%, that's for a third of teachers that we do not support the idea. And we need to have an onboard awareness.
Thank you.
Yes. Between these two schedules, the difference is 15 minutes. And that would be 15 minutes possibly added to the instruction time. That's not a whole lot of extra time to add to all of the subjects that we're currently teaching. Also, in my experience, to have an entire 30 minutes of recess means that you would actually be, it would be longer than that. Because our students come back from lunch, most of the time, we went out after lunch. So we'd have to come back after lunch, we'd have to get our coats on, we'd have to line up, we'd have to go out the door if they could play, we'd have to line up, we'd have to come back in, we'd have to clear our coats off, and we'd go to the bathroom. So that's, that is not going to be all done in 30 minutes, unless it's a 20-minute recess and you expect us to, you know, be able to have a little bit of playtime on either end of it. But that's just another thought.
Amy, I, I think it's that the coats and the, that's part of this transition time, these 20 minutes in here. So the hope is that you use this time so you do get the full, you know, the full 30 minutes of recess or whatever it is. And one thing I want to make clear, because you, you both kind of made, brought up a good point, was that these ones in bold right here, that's on purpose. Because one of the things we heard from teachers was that, I just want some time to be able to use it for what I want to use it for. And so the idea behind it was, you know, they may have a lesson in science, which would be in this block of time, but they want to do something to extend that. So they would have time to maybe do some inquiry or do a, you know, a, you know, a STEM lesson that takes a little bit longer so they could, they could use that block on a day, on a particular day. But maybe on another particular day, where their lesson is more in the, in that zone, they would maybe do a, a social-emotional learning activity. Or maybe they might do, you know, a genius hour where they let the kids just do some discovery and that sort of thing, or some inquiry on a topic that they're interested in. So the idea behind it wasn't to like, still six, segment off every minute and then add another segment that, that, you know, you have to do one of these seven things. It's because teachers get, what we've heard from teachers is that, I just need time to do what I think the kids need right now. And one of the ideas was have, what's, was called when, which just stands for what I need right now. You know, what, what do the kids need right now? So it's add, it's, the purpose of that is to add, 15 minutes doesn't seem like a long time when you're putting on a schedule. But, but when you're in a block of time, that can take a lot of, of pressure off of making sure I get all my blocks done in a short amount of time and be as precise as it is, I guess. If that makes sense. But I did want you to know that that's not, you know, we're not thinking you have to do this much, take that 15 minutes and do these four things. It's more about, here's some time added to instructional block, use it what you think is best for your kids.
Right. I understand you can add five minutes to math, you can add five minutes to science, or, you know, however much more you might need, and that would be your extra 15 minutes. Going back to what happens when we do have inclement weather and we may have to make up snow days like we did last year. And we added 10 minutes to the day. So that would mean extending the day to three 10, three 15. So how, how is that going to, I mean, have we thought about that too?
Well, you know, I, I always think about weather. Because, matter of fact, I'm thinking about right now. Because I got some things going on out there right now. But the, you know, I, I looked at the average over the last few years about, because, you know, caramel builds in two days, you know, for snow and that sort of thing. And it almost averages two days. So like one year, you won't have any at all, and then you'll have three or four, you know, the other days. So, you know, that's, that's something we have taken into consideration. But I mean, if we have a snow op, you know, ice, icepocalypse or, you know, that, that again, we'll have to come up with a solution for that. Right now, there's some pretty decent Indiana code that says if you're a high-performing school, you can be released from a lot of those minutes and that sort of thing. So that may be some, a direction we might want to explore if it got to where it's so excessive that it's going to really make our day very long.
So we can apply for a waiver?
Ah, I don't, sorta. I mean, it's, there's not even a waiver process, but, but I could, we can go into more detail on that if it comes up. Yes ma'am?
Just a couple more things. So kind of what Pam was talking about, about the coats thing, that would have to happen even if it was 15 minutes. So making the recess longer, that wouldn't matter, the coat thing. Which is why earlier I asked about if you were going to separate them or not. Because if you separated them, then you'd have to do the coat thing twice, which is a process. And then the instruction time, one of the schools, I think it's Cherry Tree, is doing a Twitter thing where they're talking about things they're grateful for right now. And one of the things they did was about an educator. So it kind of got me thinking about the things that I remember about school. And it was usually those things kind of that what we're talking about. And one of the things I remembered, which, side note, is we read Little House on the Prairie in like fourth grade. And then we took like milk cartons and made like little log cabins with pretzel sticks and stuff. And we made like cornbread mush. It's like those kind of activities. Like that's what I remember is those kind of where you know you're going and doing something extra. And that's like my dream for something like this, is where these teachers can take these opportunities to do a science experiment or to do something with that little extra time. That's all.
Good. Any other questions about this piece?
Uh, one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I remember what it was. One of the things too, is I was thinking with extending the day, I know, is that there's kids who are having longer days anyway. We have quite a few who are doing after-school care. My children had the opportunity to come home and ride the bus for a long time while I was a stay-at-home mom. And now that I'm a full-time working parent, my kids are in after-school care until 5:30, 6 o'clock at night. And I, and I think that that is something where, you know, to think about is how long the day is. But I also think that these kids are still, if we do it the right way, they still can thrive with an extra 30 minutes of the day. I don't, I don't see any change in my children from staying at school longer than from when they were able to come home sooner. So we just got to do it the right way. And I'm pretty confident that we could.
Thank you. So we've completed the first lap. Are you guys ready for lap two? All right. All right. So another section, the, the secondary parents were able to weigh in on was the idea of changing the beginning of the school day. And if you watched the video, you see there's a lot of research that secondary students, especially kids in puberty, function much better on a later start school day. So the, what we posed to the, the community and to our secondary teachers was what if we took and started school at 8:45 AM and then... we took and started school at 8:45 a.m. and then ended the day at 3:45 p.m., which is more in tune with their circadian rhythm? And, uh, as you can see, we had about, uh, as far as from parents, secondary parents, we received 87% were very supportive of it and 13% did not support it. Um, it would be, it was, uh, here's a, a look at what it would look like. Currently, our middle school day starts at 7:45 and goes to 3:05, and then the high school's at 7:50 to 3:05. Uh, the proposed days would kind of munch those two together, and it would be 8:45 to 3:45 for a seven-hour day. So you'll notice that both, uh, the high school and the middle school are reducing the total minutes, uh, of, that they have during the school day. Um, and where that's coming from, uh, is that, um, at the middle school, they're going to reduce some of their announcement time at the start of the day and then reduce some of their transition times so that instructional time doesn't change. And then at the high school, they're just doing it straight out of transition time, uh, you know, from class to class, and they're able to capture that minutes. They, they, they were able to reduce 15 minutes and the, uh, middle school is able to reduce 20 minutes, uh, to meet those time goals. So that's kind of where the, you know, they've lined it up. So the idea would be 420 minutes of instruction, or excuse me, 420 total minutes, 360 of instruction, and then the 30-minute lunch, and then 30 minutes in transition. So they're able to reduce that, a lot of those transitions, uh, in that setting. Okay. Benefits from the parents, um, responding was that they, they just support the research, and there's a lot of research on it. And, uh, as we kind of explained in that video, there's not many arguments against that. Uh, that's, that's good for them in that little time of life. Um, another plus was that, uh, parents were pleased they'd be driving more in daylight more often than not for our student drivers. And, uh, I think we probably all think that's a good idea, that those guys are in daylight more than they are in the dark. Um, but then they also, that it would have a positive effect on the, effect, affect on the academics. Some of the drawbacks, um, and this is probably the most common one, concern that push sport practices and games back, um, and rehearsal times later in the day, which it's, it's, that would be true for after-school activities. Uh, concern it would interfere with student job schedules, uh, so it'd be 45 minutes later than that, on that. And concern it would give them an excuse to stay up later. And, uh, that, uh, was mentioned in several few, several times. Uh, well, if you read the research, a lot of it is that they are more alert later in the evening, and that's the idea behind letting them sleep in because they rest better on the other end, uh, early in the morning. But it is a concern. Here's some of the general comments. Uh, again, we came back to homework loads, and, uh, that became a, a pretty prevalent theme. Rhonda's back there shaking her head, yes. Um, and then, uh, students are staying up late as is, and with a later end time, and this will shorten the available, uh, time for activities. So, um, the idea is if you're starting later, the window of after activities and, and sleep time is, uh, going to be shorter. Um, and then some parents were, um, saying 8:45 is a little long, why don't you, why don't you break it down to 8:30? And then consider that. Um, so we go to secondary teachers' feedback, and you can see the percentages, again, were pretty good. Um, and the question was the same, we went 85. And then in this case, we had 67% were in support of that. Uh, 16% were not supportive of it, and then we had 17 that, uh, were undecided. And a common theme in the undecided was, "I need more information." You know, what, probably more about like, "What's this going to look like?" and all the detail of it, I would imagine, so. But here's some of the comments. Uh, promote student health and focus. Uh, absences and tardies may decrease. Uh, research on changing sleep patterns during adolescent adolescence is supported by many teachers. Uh, again, we're just kind of going back to the research. Drawbacks, uh, were concerns for teachers who have second jobs. Uh, concerned students will stay up later defeating the intention. Um, may interfere with after-school activities, jobs, and tutoring. And then coaches have expressed, uh, concern with work-life balance because that's going to push them back, you know, 45 minutes or so. And some general comments is, "Will the caramel traffic pattern be affected?" And, um, that's an interesting question. I, I would imagine it would because the kids and everybody arriving, at least on Main Street right there, they're all kind of, uh, coming together at the same time. At the intermediate schools, or at the middle schools, I'm not sure it will have, um, that big of an effect. Um, you know, buses will be running a little bit later, so it could. That'd be interesting. That'd be an interesting outcome to tech, check and just see if it did. Um, some, could some practices and rehearsals be moved before school and after school? And that's something we would have to monitor and, and force, uh, because it would defeat the purpose if, uh, we had school start later and then, uh, students would be required to come early. Um, I did talk to some swimmers, and they're really excited about coming in at 6:00 instead of 5:00. Uh, so I do think there's some, uh, there's some early morning practices, things that are going on right now that, um, would continue because they come in early, but they'll come in an hour later. Uh, so, uh, but that's something that will be on us to monitor, that we don't, uh, flip it and then we don't get the, the benefit, you know, that it's intended for. Uh, lunch periods and passing periods, uh, passing periods are definitely going to be affected in both of the secondary schools, they'll be shorter. Um, and then what procedure will be put in place for students who arrive early? And, uh, and, uh, students actually shouldn't arrive early unless they have an appointment with a teacher or, or something. So that one is a little more, uh, if it becomes an issue, I guess we'd have to deal with it. But, um, there is some consideration, and you might see it a little bit, uh, with what about middle school kids, um, you know, being on their own to be able to make the bus? And, uh, there was questions about would, uh, there be like, uh, a before-school care at the middle school level? And I did meet with, uh, Parks Department folks, and they said they would do that if there was a need for it. Um, right now, the middle school after-school program has about three or four kids in it. So it's not a, uh, there just wasn't a lot of interest in that. But, you know, the, uh, you know, there could be, you know, six, parents of sixth graders that were like, "I'm gonna, I'd rather drop them off in the morning and, and then they can come into school." So that's an option we have available to us, uh, based on need. Okay. Now, do we want to, any questions about any of this before I go to the next piece? Yep?
Um, with the passing periods?
Mm-hmm.
Carmel High School's pretty big.
Mm-hmm.
So do you, well, do you have an idea of what they were thinking about as far as shortening the time? Because I know that time's used not only to get to class, but also to use the restroom and such.
Yeah. I don't, um, I don't know the exact times.
I think seven minutes.
Is it seven minutes?
Five minutes for middle school, seven minutes for high school, so that's one thing I'm concerned here. If you say passing period, we definitely get that due. So that means five period, five-minute passing period, I think that would be shorter. And healthy with us, two should.
Can you talk about that a little bit, Amy?
So currently at the high school, our passing period is 10 minutes long. And so what they were looking at is shortening that down to seven to eight minutes. Um, and so as we were looking at this, we looked at our schedulers to say, "Can we make this work before we presented this?" As they looked at that, they felt, um, secure that, yes, they could make, keep the 90-minute blocks with a seven to eight-minute passing period, and students will be able to get from one end of load to the other. Um, and some of the things they looked at is if you're at the farthest end, like in, on the third floor in math, and you need to get all the way over to performance hours, um, what that can look like as far as, um, creating scheduling for students so that that doesn't happen from one end all the way to the other. The middle schools right now, their passing periods are seven minutes, and they're looking to, um, cut those down to five-minute passing periods. And then as Dr. Pearsford mentioned, in the morning time, they have a little bit of extra time in their first period for announcements, and then they have extra time at the end of the day, because their day is actually the hallways right now. And so they would cut some of that time away too, um, to be able to get to the, cut those 20 minutes out. And they felt confident that they could make that schedule work as well, where students are not rushed, they have time to get to their little class, and they have time to, um, get to the restroom. And also, middle schools, sometimes that unstructured time in the hallways, it's, it's better when you get into their next classroom rather than being in the hall for a hallway period of time. Thank you. Sorry, maybe I.
No, no, that's perfect. Um, what, do we have rules or, um, procedures as far as how long practices can be? I'm not to that stage yet. So do we have anything where we, you know, practices after school regardless, it can only be so long, or do we have anything that you found?
Not that I know of. Um, you know, I think it's left to discretion of the coaches and activity sponsors. But, uh, you know, they also understand kids have to stay healthy and, and they have work to do, and besides their activities. So I'm hoping there's some balance there, but I don't know of any policy or procedure that, uh, that locks that down. I would imagine if it becomes an issue, we would deal with it, but not aware of it right now.
And then my last thing was, um, homework's been mentioned quite a bit. Is this something, maybe not necessarily with this, that we are looking at on like a broader level as far as homework load goes across the board?
Not that I'm aware of. Amy, have we done anything in the past or present?
Um, it's not something that we're currently looking at, but it's certainly something that we can delve into to kind of look at because we are seeing it quite a bit in some feedback.
Sometimes when you do these kind of feedbacks, you pick up on some other, other themes that really aren't related to the topic, but, you know, and that's one that kept coming up.
Well, I, I guess I have a concern about passing periods at the high school, especially the fact that when I know with the current amount of passing period time we have, we've got kids that don't have time to go to their locker anytime during the day. And so they're carrying a backpack all day with all their stuff, and so now you're going to add a shorter period of time, um, that may affect those kids that are able to go to their lockers now that won't be able to do later, so.
Yeah. It's, it's really interesting to see as we move through and things become more digital if, uh, you know, if, if we'll need lockers in the future. But the, uh, but that's true. But also, you know, we also want our staff to have common sense, um, because we do have kids sometimes that their schedule's just, they're a long way away. And, uh, and once the teachers can verify that, you know, um, I don't know that they're going to rack up a bunch of tardies, you know, when we're aware of a situation. So there is, there is deals to be made with student services to help kids that, you know, have a, a tougher route. Or sometimes we have kids that, um, you know, we just can't walk fast or have physical issues, and, uh, you know, they'll get a pass where they can be a minute or two late, that sort of thing. So we do have ability to do accommodations for kids that get in a pinch like that. So for the record though, I'm not saying that everybody can be tardy anytime they want to right now, so, yeah.
Oh, are you done? Okay. Um, do we know which, um, EC activities are meeting currently in the morning, other than swimming?
Yeah, and I, I imagine they have a handle on that at the high school level, but I do know there's more than just sports.
So those would be grandfathered into this schedule and would continue to be allowed to meet in the morning?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that, that's something we'll have to monitor closely, but like, like I mentioned, I may use the swimmers as an example, that they come in at 5:00. Uh, we would expect them to, to come in at 6:00, that we wouldn't, you know, because that's their, you know, that's kind of their lifestyle. But like, let's say we had a, a club that met, you know, for two hours every night, and they decide, well, since that, we're, we're going to move that to the morning, we'd have to have a conversation about why is, why is that necessary? Um, you know, and are we, are we defeating their purpose, you know, at that point in time? So a lot of it's going to be common sense, but we'll have to monitor that. And, uh, and we've seen that, um, you know, when, when looking through research, that's one of the challenges sometimes, is make sure that, you know, we don't, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul and then get right, put kids right back in the situation they were in before where they, they really could use that sleep in the morning.
Okay. And another one, I noticed that the parents mentioned an 8:30 start time instead of the 8:45.
Mm-hmm.
Does this have to do with transportation or are we, and I know we've staggered, uh, our transportation, our buses for high school, middle school, and elementary. Are we going to be able to deliver middle school and high school kids at the same time?
Yeah. One of the things you'll notice in the, in the, uh, the timing of it is the, the magic 45-minute window. And, uh, transportation has let us know that they have to have at least 45 minutes between the elementary route and the secondary route, you know, in order to make it work to, so they can get the, you know, in this case, if, uh, if we flip the times and have the secondary guys starting at 8:45, so elementary would go first at 8:00, and then 8:45 is, you know, the 45 minutes later, uh, because that's their window that they need to make that work. So that's really one of the criteria that we looked at when we were building these, these, uh...
Do we still have A and B routes?
Right, right. What do you mean, A and B?
Like, you have, uh, middle school kids that are picked up early, and then they're dropped off at the school, and then they have to be monitored.
Yeah.
And then you have your B.
Yeah.
And they're brought in later so that we can use those buses to finish off the, the other ones.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I call that double routing.
Oh.
I didn't know the A and B part of that. But yeah, we're doing that right now because of this bus shortage of drivers. So, uh, so that's going on right now. And it's also happening at a couple of elementary schools, Roger?
My, my son's on early one.
Yeah.
My daughter's on the...
Middle school. Yeah, middle school one. So that is, that is what we're doing right now to try to, to deal with the bus driver shortage.
Okay. So then we will have to monitor those students that have to come in early that are part of the, uh...
Right.
Uh, before-school program.
Correct. Yeah, that would be, uh, something we have to do.
For, for my school, for that one, that they go into the maker's space. My son's on the first round, so he'll go and he'll hang out in the maker's space for a little bit, and then the bus goes for the second round to get the other ones.
I think I'd like the maker's space better than the cafeteria tables.
Yeah.
That'd be more fun. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, some of our high school students are currently taking, or some of them are planning to take classes, half-day classes outside high school. So for example, they may be taking classes at J Everett Learning, uh, North Central High, we're taking classes at Ivy Tech. So how are these students affected by the late start, I mean, not late start, by the 8:45 starting time? So as far as I know, so right now, the afternoon program at J L starts at noon. So once our students finish second period, and they can move to, they can take the bus, they'll be right on time for them to start the programs, afternoon programs at noon. So since now we push the time an hour later, yeah, how does that work out?
Mm-hmm. I believe that the J Everett Light Career Center, that's where we do our vocational programming, um, they're continuing, that, you know, the morning session's going to start at 7:20 at J Everett Light. So students who are in that program would have to report at 7:20 to J Everett Light. So they would not get the benefit from the, you know, the, the later start time at that point in time. And then the middle part, um, I don't know that I've looked at the detail of that. Uh, that might be something that's, you know, the school counselors will have to work, work out with. I do know there's some flexibility with J Everett Light, but we don't want to put our kids in a bad, you know, bad situation time-wise, so we'll just have to look at those schedules. But I don't know much about the midday. I know, I did check on the morning though, to see what the, the startup time is, which is earlier than when, you know, when do we, when, what was our time zone when we start in the morning? Was it 7:55?
We, yes, we start at 7:50, and they start at 7:20.
So that they're, they're out of our, they're out of our time zone anyhow, yeah.
Can you go back to the schedule comparison?
I don't know. Yeah, this is the right one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go.
So just to make sure that, um, I understand and those who are listening, the reason we're cutting time is because, so that they're, we're not staying later than 3:45? Is that why we're cutting our transition times?
I think what we came to the conclusion that we really wanted to, to make it a seven-hour I think what we came to the conclusion that we really wanted to make it a seven-hour day. And then also by having both the elementary and the secondary on a seven-hour day, we could work that forty-five minute window really efficiently. So, that was kind of a combination of those things. And, uh, and, uh, we involved the principals in this when working on these. And they came up with cutting the time to get to that seven-hour day. Is that accurate, Amy? I think that was the process of that.
Okay. This is where I have the question about the prep time. Because nowadays will be exactly the same, but the middle, the high school and middle schools will have ninety-minute preps. And the elementary will still have their thirty, their hour with forty-five minutes.
I really don't have a good answer for you that, Pam, because elementary, the elementary level and the secondary level are just very different. And when you do the, um, you know, the block scheduling, it all, you know, that's a very different kind of scheduling. And so, uh, and, you know, I've, I've heard this argument for thirty-seven years, you know, about that. And all I can say is that they're very different schedules, very different educational programs. And, uh, and I don't, we don't, we don't have a situation here where we can schedule this and get everything done that we need to get done and have ninety-minute prep periods for the elementary teachers. So, uh, that part of making that equal is, is going to be difficult. The, uh, but we did, as we'll see later in the presentation, you know, I think we do have an opportunity to get some more prep time, but we're not going to get to ninety minutes. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to the third lap. Oh, Katie's kind of.
I know, I'm sorry. Have you worked with the teachers group, which now for, I can't think of their name? That's it. Yet, sorry.
You know, there's people back there. Yes, yeah. Yeah, we've had conversations and actually I sent them this presentation, although there's been some corrections and some extra slides. So, I'll, not extra slides, but we added some stuff to a couple of slides time schedule-wise. But, um, and then we're going to meet again, actually after this meeting to, to talk some feedback about that, about this presentation. So, we're in constant communication.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right. Now, we're going to go into the world of late starts. And, uh, what the notion is behind the late start, and this one, it talks about starting approximately one hour later once a month to provide educators time to engage in professional development. Carmel High School currently does this on gold days. And, um, and the idea behind it is to give teachers times to get together and do professional learning communities, which is a small group of collaboration. And, uh, and they would work together, look at student data, adjust instruction. There's just a lot of benefits to the, the P L C model. And the difficult part of it is trying to find time to let the consistent time for those teachers to get together and collaborate. I know you've heard me say it over and over again, but the highest performing organizations are, have collaborative environments where they work together to get better. And, uh, and so, the, the challenge then is how do we do that efficiently? So, high school's been doing it. But we want to expand that and expand it to K-12. But first we'll take a look at the secondary part of it because the middle schools do not have a late start and do not have that P L C time broken in. They do have team time, which is a different, a different model for middle schools. Okay, so approximately eighty-one percent were in favor of it and approximately nineteen percent were not in favor of it. We didn't have a whole lot of undecided in that, in that area. So, here's a look at it. And I just put both times on there. So, on this one, we'll focus on the secondary late start. So, it would go from nine forty-five to three forty-five. So, it drops us to three hundred and sixty total minutes, three hundred minutes of instruction, thirty minutes of lunch, thirty minutes of transition. At secondary level, the reason why they like gold days is because they take the time out of the S R T, which is in, uh, they don't lose instructional time that way. And that would be, uh, Amy, I didn't really ask the question about middle school. Is it a similar schedule where they would be able to, to work it on the S R Ts or not?
They possibly could work it in core plus. However, the middle schools, their core plus, their days are not aligned. They may be able to get them aligned. It just depends if they may not be able to because they share some teachers in between the schools. So, they may not be able to exactly align them. It's like they have all the gold days, have the gold days for middle schools. We'd have to look at that.
Yeah. So, that might be a scheduling nightmare or, or at least a challenge that we might have to do. All right. So, that's the timing of it. The benefits of it was we want to support the teachers and their professional growth. Give, on the parent's side, some options for doctor appointments. And, uh, to me, it's orthodontist. It seemed like I spent a large part of my life at the orthodontist trying to get my kids there and back. Seen marked benefits at the high school. It has been successful at the high school. Teachers benefit as well as students and students are able to catch on work and collaborate on projects. And I did, I do see that quite a bit at the high school. Some of the drawbacks is, big ones, childcare concerns continue to be a common thread. And that would be the middle school kids in particular. It's that whole idea that parents would have to leave their kids at home and go to work and then, and hope to get on the bus on time and do all that kind of stuff. Some would prefer an early release and that's a, another thing you'll see kick up a little bit. General comments would be, will the buses still run same time? And, uh, the answer to that is the buses will run an hour later. So, what happens now, and I think there was some confusion of this when the parents were responding, especially the secondary parents was, uh, at the high school now, they take the kids at the regular start time of the day at the seven fifty mark. And then the kids are just on their own kind of free time. And, uh, that's where they do get together and collaborate and work together. I think the, I think the economy of the coffee shops in the morning on release days is probably going to go down if we all get on time schedule. So, what would happen is, and then those buses go and do their, you know, their other routes. In this case, if we do this K-12, all the bus, the bus, the whole bus system will just run an hour later. So, all the kids would be delivered at school, you know, at this case, you know, at that nine forty-five time. And then again, the elementary kids, you know, an hour later as well at, at that nine o'clock time. So, uh, so the bus schedules would be in line for that. So, there wouldn't be any drop them off early and, you know, somebody watch them. That wouldn't be needed anymore because that would be covered by, I mean, K-12. Would the dates be clearly published and frequent reminders these days come into play? And you'll see that, you know, throughout the feedback because there's some concerns about consistency. And because when you have an every, twice a month, those are dates you're picking and it's not a regular schedule. Consider having some clubs start before school. Some parents prefer weekly release for consistency. And that's the other part of that other one. You know, we heard that on several comments back was, I would rather have it an early release every day or every, not every day, every week. So, it's consistent on a day than I would twice a month on different days and that sort of thing. So, that kind of argument went back and forth. I will tell you that, um, looking at our surrounding schools, Hamilton Southeastern does a early release on Mondays of about twenty minutes. And then their, uh, their staff has to stay an additional twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes. So, it's a forty-five minute after school with a twenty-minute early release. And then, um, that's kind of how they do their early release. School, students with after-school project or after-school clubs, activities have to be supervised by somebody that's not a teacher. And then at Westfield, they do a, um, a late start. And they do it every week, a late start every week. And it's about thirty minutes, a thirty-minute late start. And then at Noblesville, this year's, they've been, well, this year they went to the, the flipped time schedule. I don't know if they were doing early release last year, I think. And they do a early release at the end of the day. And again, that's for thirty minutes is, is what they run. So, that back, that early release versus the late start is a, you know, is a, uh, just a, a topic. It's, it's a, you know, something that you have to figure out what's the, what's the benefit and what's the, you know, the negatives to it. So, yeah, but that's, that's the feedback here. That's, we've seen that theme pop up again, again. The reason I keep looking back there is because Rhonda was crunching it and she's giving me the, so I'm, I'm, I'm looking for the cues back there. All right. So, we go to the teachers. And the teachers was, that's probably the highest one we have. It's eighty-one percent support and four percent don't support and fifteen percent saw some pluses and minuses to it. So, the benefits, important for teachers to model collaboration for students. Provides extra time to discuss and incorporate new ideas. May teachers like the beginning of the day timeframe. So, um, that's good information. Drawbacks, concerned with student supervision both in and out of school. And that was, I think, based on our current model where the kids get dropped off and, uh, and then they wait, you know, for the, the hour and once they ride the bus. Some teachers feel that they have adequate meeting time just as it is right now. Some general comments, again, back to supervision. And then would this replace other team meetings and how would this work on a two-hour delay due to inclement weather? Which is right up my alley because that's what I do. I talk about weather a lot. But, uh, the interesting part about this is because the students would be on an hour delay already, we just delay another hour for a two-hour delay. Uh, but, uh, but, you know, that's something we could, we could work out. Not a big fan of three-hour delays, so we're not going to do that. So, all right. So, that was the, the high school side of it. Any comments, questions about the high school, middle school, late start, bi-monthly thing?
So, I just want a clarification. Are you suggesting that if we do the late start for elementary, middle school and then plus current high school? So, all school, all schools would be on the same day that have late start? So, it's not like, you know, different schedules?
No, for the, for it to work with transportation, which, and I know I'm talking about transportation a lot, but it's a, you know, it's, it's a key, key wheel in this. For transportation to work, everybody would be on the same delay, you know, the same delay. Because that way the buses will just run, you know, the normal routes and everything that they do, but just one hour later. And so, we'll be able to go from elementary to the secondary.
Yeah. So, parents only need to remember one schedule instead of give them kids at different.
Right. Yeah, I think the key thing when you're doing a schedule that's, if, 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 if the recommendation ends up being that we'll do two a month, that it's going to be that you publish those dates and you remind about those dates and remind, remind, remind. Even, even school districts where they do it every week, they still remind, 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 remind. Because, uh, you know, um, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's aware. And once you get into the habit, I don't, I've not had a whole lot of issues or heard any comments that, uh, that the high school, you know, kids are messing up because they can't remember there's an early release day. The most common feedback I get is that parents go wake up their kid and their kid says, why are you waking me up? It's an early release day or a late start day. I'm sorry, late start day. So, uh, I got quite a bit of feedback on that from students, but that's about it. Other questions?
So, are you, are we still looking and at doing either a late start or an early release? Or have we kind of, I know this isn't a recommendation, but are we kind of leaning toward one?
Well, partly that's just the, the feedback. We pitched it out as a, as a late start because we have a history of late start at the high school and, uh, and left it out that way. But it's certainly something we could discuss to see what, you know, an early release might look like. But unfortunately, I don't think we can do like, you know, one and we can't do a combo, you know, where you, you know, do part of the district. Pam had an idea about doing the elementary kids as a early release and the secondary guys as a late start, but that would add an hour to the bus driver's day. And that would be, cost some significant money and it could be a bit confusing. But I, I think efficiency-wise, we'd have to choose whether we want to do them, do in the morning or the, or the afternoon sort of thing. Biggest argument against, uh, um, early release is secondary sports and activities. Because the kids go into, they just have to, the ones that are staff school have to go somewhere and someone has to watch them, you know, for however much time you, you choose. And, you know, they just have to wait. Now, some practices start late at the high school anyhow. So, maybe it's not, maybe it's not as big an issue as we think it is. But that'd be something we need to really explore if we want to start looking into that to see what would that impact be? Because that's something we have not looked at or asked many questions about.
Well, I think too, with any of the options, somebody's going to have to be watched. And if you have the, you do the early or the late start, you're going to have elementary kids who need somebody who's going to stay later or you're going to have the other option. So, right.
Let me, before you get away from that though, for the elementary students, the late start, the parks department's going to have their early, you know, super, the latchkey program. They're, they're going to be there. So, parents that would have to drop their students off early. And then again, we'd have to look at that middle school if there's a need. They're, we talked to the parks department about that. So, they do have interest in doing that. But it would, again, cost money. So, there's a, a cost to that.
Don't we have more participation in the after-school E S E already?
Yes.
So, then you'd have more students who are already staying after school.
Yeah, at the elementary school, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Okay.
And it would be a longer, you know, it'd be longer depending how much, how early the release is. It'd be longer. Yeah.
But so, one of your comments was that the teachers like that time at the beginning of the day as opposed to the end of the day. And then the other question is, I know for the high school, when they have late start, if it's a short week, then they don't get it. So, there might be certain months where you only get one late start. Is that the thought process would be similar?
Yes, but we, we haven't had a lot of conversations about that. But that has been the past practice that if you have a short week, you wouldn't, wouldn't do a, you know, a, a P L C late start.
Regarding the late start and the early dismissal versus the late start, I noticed that the specials teachers make comments that they would like to be able to collaborate with teachers in other buildings. And that would be a good reason for a, an early dismissal so that, you know, if you want to collaborate with other grade levels in other buildings and find out what's going on, which we have done, I mean, I remember doing that in the past. That would be very hard to do on, on a late start because you only have one hour. And that, so that collaboration wouldn't take place.
Yeah, that, before you get too far off of that, I think that there's room for like maybe more virtual communications. Like they could FaceTime or, or connect that way and still be able to interact some. But if you do the after-school where they travel after-school, you still have, they're going to spend part of that, that amount of, that hour driving somewhere. And, uh, so they're going to lose time or they're going to have to stay longer to get that same amount of time in. So, there's some, there's some back and forths on the after-school piece of that too. But I, I would agree, it'd be very difficult to, unless they came early, you know, to meet, you know, and would some, some folks do that. I mean, we're, we're talking about something more formal and structured. A lot of teachers get together and, and do things at different times because they work together that way. But, um, but there are some back and forths to that, that notion.
Okay. Also, um, late start days or early dismissal days are still considered full days of school, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep.
And, uh, in, in, there was a time period when we used to have a professional development day.
Oh, yeah.
When we would have a whole day off of school so that the teachers could collaborate or do whatever. Are those days still, uh, are they allowable now with, at the state level? I know when Tony Bennett was there that he pulled all that out of there and said, we couldn't do that anymore. But, um, so are those allowable now? Is that a possibility?
Not without adding days to the calendar. Those do not count as a day.
Okay. So, that would.
I, I go back so far that there were two in the first semester and two in the second semester. So, you had four days a year that you could have a full day professional development. And then they cut it to two days and then it went away completely.
Right. So, that would involve extra compensation for teachers, et cetera, because you're at, you're making the, the contract longer. Let's see. Oh, if we had parents who had childcare issues, and this would be more at the middle school rather than elementary, would, we're already looking into the parks department, taking care of that?
Yeah, I met with, with them as part of investigating some of the, the details that we had when we were putting this together. And again, I would say with the middle school, their, their, um, their thoughts are if there's enough interest to run a program, they'd run it. The after-school program for the middle school right now is very, very small. And right now, they transport a couple of kids to an elementary site actually to, uh, to, uh, accommodate their needs.
And we already talked about the late start where they could come in and if they're working on team projects or something like that, they could come in and have a study, set a study hall or.
We have to discuss that to see what that might look like. Because right now, that just happens at the high school organically because there's some time to burn there. But, um, but we'd have to look at that and see access to the building. You know, we, we don't want to just have the building open and people walking around in it and we don't know why they're there. We'd have to have some kind of order to that. But not impossible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Any other? Want to turn into the fourth quarter? We're going to the fourth lap? I like to use the mile-run metaphor a lot. I'm sorry, you're going to have to get used to that. All right, so late start elementary, and this one was probably our closest when it came down to, you know, kind of the positive, supported and not support, so, because it's 56%, 44%. And a lot of comments, would this be accurate to say a lot, was about childcare and work schedule issues. Because that, you know, starting at nine o'clock, that's getting into people's work schedules for sure. So here's what it looked like. If you look on the elementary start over there, so we'd go from nine o'clock to three o'clock, and it'd be 360 total minutes, 300 minutes instruction and then the other. And then if you look, we cut the 15 minutes off of recess. Recession would only be 15 minutes on those days. So that's a little bit different. And the transition's a little bit different, because it'd be a shorter day. Okay. Some benefits. Again, support teachers and professional development needs, support of teachers and the large amount of time they spend, students along with other professional obligations, share ideas, and then decrease the need for substitute teachers on PD days, so it might be a little bit of that. Drawbacks. Many parents voice concerns over interference with parent work schedules and increased childcare or care costs. That was, I don't know if I, I don't know, Rhonda would use to call that the most, the most common response? Yeah. And then concerned inconsistent schedule to have a negative impact on students, be confusing to parents. So that goes back to that, you know, some people are saying, "If you're going to do it, do it every day, every week," and, or, you know, "Or do some really good communications." And then some patrons just feel that professional development should be after school, so not during, not during school day. General comments. There you go. Have a full day for PD, and build in the calendar. Would prefer start elementary, same days as late start for middle school. So that idea of having around the same schedule was a theme. Like implementation data after the first year, so there's the data watchers out there. I kind of like those guys. Then there, but there it is again. Could we consider early dismissal? And then consider every week, so it'd be consistent. How would it affect preschool drop-off? I talked to the presidents of the PTO, the coordinating council, and they brought to my attention that a lot of preschool drop-offs are at nine o'clock. And so that that would be a conflict for them to get their student on the bus on a late start day and get to the preschool to drop their younger child off at the right time. So it doesn't surprise me that I got that intel before we got the numbers there. Will the two times a month late starts occur on months on large holiday breaks? That's back to Mr. Kirschner's comment. And then would students arrive at the school at usual 8:00 AM and receive supervision for an hour? And that's that confusion with the high school schedule, and the answer, that would be no. But if you wanted to drop them off, there would be childcare, you know, for that eight to nine slot. And teachers, we had about 70% said yes, and about 15% said no, and then we had 15% that was trying to, you know, posit, and they was kind of weeding it out. And give more teachers time, more time to collaborate. I like the opportunity to meet within cross-grade level configurations, so they could go, you know, vertical. Would allow for fewer sub-days away from students. Great time for special education staff to collaborate with their general education partners. And specialist teachers excited to meet with other teammates throughout the district, and that goes back to Pam's comment about how we could make that happen. Some of the drawbacks. Concerned about the inconsistency in weekly schedule. Concerned about childcare. Satisfied with current schedule and PD opportunities. So that childcare would be their own child, getting their own child where they need to be. Some general comments. Would prefer weekly. Would they decrease required staff meetings? Cut down some staff meetings? Would it start in place of collaboration meetings? And that's what we discussed earlier, that that's where teachers probably would capture, some elementary teachers would capture more prep time, because there wouldn't be a need for those collaborations, formal collaborations during school day. And then how would it affect the early childhood classrooms? And probably wouldn't have a lot of impact on that. Amy, do we, I don't remember the detail of that.
So right now, the early childhood classrooms go a half-day. So the morning class begins from 8:05 to 10:30, and the morning class comes at noon, and ends until 2:35. So we would just adjust the times, that we would split that in half.
So it'd be a little logistics to work out there. And then, the bottom line. So it's the last slide. How much is it going to cost? So we looked at it, probably the biggest cost would be that we're going to be extending the elementary IAs by 30 minutes, and extending the administrative assistance by 30 minutes. And Roger did the calculations on that, it's going to be somewhere around $350,000. It was about $300,000 for the instructional assistance, there's quite a few of those, and about 50 for the administrative assistance.
A year?
Yeah. That'd be a year. So it doesn't come without a price tag. That's the biggest cost that we, that's the amount that we could come up with, would impact it by adding the 30 minutes. There'd probably be a little offset, because we'd be on the late starts. There's a question about whether you have the instructional assistants come in an hour later. But discussing that also, there's, the IAs could benefit from some of the professional development in the mornings, so I kind of wanted to keep that available, because instructional assistance plays an important role in a lot of kids' programs, so might want to keep that one. So we didn't count an offset. And, brings us to the finish line, so now we can do some questions and discussion.
Yeah, I have some questions. You alluded to the fact that you're not sure whether the IAs will be coming in on late start days. And so that would be, that could be a savings if they don't come in for that extra hour two times a month.
Correct.
And there used to be a restriction on how many hours an IA could work during the day before they receive benefits. Is there still that restriction at the state level?
Yeah, well, it's Affordable Care Act. Roger, do you want to talk about that a little bit? He's been waiting for this question.
What you're referring to is the Affordable Care Act, so it's federal legislation, and it's based on if an employee works 30 hours a week. But for a school corporation, it's not that straightforward, because you don't work year-round and so forth.
Right.
But the long and short of it is, is that if employees work seven hours or more, they're going to be offered, under that act. And so with what we're talking about here, that would not, they would not get to that point, because most of our elementary IAs, for example, work six hours a day. So if they worked six and a half, they're still good.
Six and a half, yeah, this would be six and a half hours.
That'd be seven, I think, if they've...
There's six now, like kindergarten IAs, there may be some at six and a half.
Yeah, but we, now, this proposal would be moving that to seven hours.
So it would be, under this?
No, no, I'd move it from six to six, they're six now. Move it to six and a half.
Okay. I did the calculations differently.
Okay, so what about the secretaries? Does that change?
So do they not, do IAs not work a full bell-to-bell?
No.
I think they do. The 30-minute, the 30-minute lunch isn't counting, but they, but they do go from start school to the end of school, and they're ours.
So student day for seven and a half, seven-hour student day, there's a half-hour lunch in it, which makes it six and a half hours actual. For the employee, it's a six-and-a-half-hour paid day. You're not counting the lunch day.
As far as the Affordable Care Act is concerned.
They don't get paid for lunch, but it's, they're not, don't they legally need to get a break?
Well, they, no, they get a break, but the hours are calculated based on paid hours, essentially, so.
So they don't get paid for lunch?
They don't get paid for lunch. So their workday is, on a seven-hour student day, they're there with the students, then you take the half-hour lunch out. Students have half-hour lunch as well, but from the employee standpoint, that is six and a half.
Well, and I know this is just discussion, but have we looked at it, and can we look at benefits for IAs? And I know it's going to be a big number, but I think that that's an important thing. And I've also talked to Dr. Beersford about benefits for bus drivers, that we revisit, both of those may be separate from this, but like you said, we get comments from this that make us think about other things, so.
We have, both of those groups have benefits in previous years. I believe, I'm not sure which one at this point, but I believe the instructional assistants have not had benefits since 1998. And clearly, if the prospective employee, everybody needs benefits, but if they, if they have access someplace else, then it's not that they have benefits, they're just not getting it here. So what this district has done since 1998 is to focus our money on salary rather than benefits, because it's just a matter of how you want to spend the money. Bus drivers, for example, when we eliminated, when we offered benefits, about a third of the bus drivers took the benefits, which meant that two-thirds undid it. And so we felt, a couple of things. One was, is we felt the money was better spent putting what we would have spent on benefits on the salary schedule, because for two out of three of the bus drivers offering the benefits didn't make any difference, because they did take them. They had them somewhere else, or had a better deal. So, so one, there's that. And then secondly, years ago, as employers, including Carmel, moved to self-funded, the industry will tell you that benefits of part-time employees are attracting high risk for claims. And so, now when you apply that to, you know, individual people, that's not to say that every part-time person has high claims, but the fact is, is that statistically, when you offer benefits to part-time employees, you're increasing the risk. And so in a self-funded plan, ultimately, the participants are paying the cost of that.
I hate to get you guys, you know, zeroed back in here, but we're way off topic, so.
Okay. And also, secretaries, will that affect the secretaries and their day and benefits?
Yeah, the elementary, the elementary administrative assistants would be another half-hour, you know, longer, so that will cost them.
They're already getting benefits.
Right.
Right.
So really, it's just going to be a pay issue there.
And what about, I know we haven't talked about this, but what about substitute teachers? Will they be getting paid, will we be offering them more money, because we're now extending the school day that they're being paid for?
We haven't discussed that, but I don't know if that's, you know, the way, one way I look at it is if we are competitive, if we're competitive right now in the sub with other substitutes around the surrounding districts, they're running a longer day than we do. So if we're still competitive, I don't see a need to change that.
Or shortening our secondary day, and I don't anticipate we cut it.
Right.
And paying now, of course, the secondary day is longer than the elementary, but the sub day is the same.
Right. So I don't see, as long as we're competitive with the sub pool, I don't see a reason to change anything.
And another question. We also have, you were talking about data from the first year after we implement this. Do we have any data coming in from the school systems that have already implemented this?
Not, I wouldn't call it qualitative data. It's mostly anecdotal data, which is, I talked with both Beth Niedemeyer at Noblesville, and this is their first year of implementation, and it's going well. And I also talked to Sherri Gray from Westfield, this is their first year of implementation of the secondary starting later. And then they actually had to make their elementary start earlier in their settings, because they're different, have a little different schedule than we do. And they're both reporting that's going well. So, so far, so good, I think, in those settings.
Well, and I understand the concern about consistency with the childcare as well for parents, you know, because they are trying to look for somebody to cover their children, you know, on those particular days. And if it's every, every week, the same, that would be a little bit different. So I understand that concern.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
So I'm kind of just summarizing. So the, the reason we're addressing all of these separate things is because obviously, if we do it all at the same time, it's going to be less than if we kind of stagger these different things. So we have, if we change, if we flip-flop when it starts later, that will not affect cost, correct? As far as elementary, pushing back the times as far as secondary goes?
Correct. If we don't add the time to the elementary day, that eliminates the cost.
And then adding the time to the day for elementary, that includes 15, give or take, more for instruction, teacher's choice, and then 15 more for recess.
Correct.
And then, is there any wiggle room right now in their instruction time to make those changes? Are we at the max of, because legally, we have to have so many minutes. Can we kind of add that right now?
No. Amy, where are we, time-wise?
So, the state requires that the elementary has a five-hour instructional day, and the instructional day does not include lunch or recess. So we're over that already, and this seven-hour would take us to a, it would take us to a six-hour instructional day, basically, because you can't count lunch, which is 30 minutes, and you cannot count recess, which would be another 30 minutes. So we would be a six-hour instructional day. Right now, we're at about a five-hour, 25-minute instructional day.
Okay.
Or, no, five-hour, 15-minute instructional day, currently.
Okay. And then, the late start does not affect cost? Is that correct?
It wouldn't affect cost unless we, you know, it could be a slight decrease in cost by instructional assistance and possibly administrative assistance working less hour, you know, but wouldn't be, I wouldn't, it'd be negligible money, and I don't know that, I'm thinking we probably would want our administrative assistance to work, so probably just be instructional assistance. And I'm hedging on that, because I really do think that some of the IAs would benefit from that time, and we were able to do some things that would be helpful. So I'd say cost neutral. Would be my plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, feedback? So I hit you with a load of information, so, you know, I know you'll cycle through this, because that's the nature of this kind of a workshop. And so I welcome your emails, or your comments, or questions, you know, as we move forward. And thank you for your feedback today, and we will, me and the team, will get back together, and we'll cycle through some of this information, and then we'll also take information from our teachers and teacher association, and we'll put together a recommendation that we think will be in the best interest of our kids and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is reports. All we have scheduled is the superintendent report, so will we just stay where we're at?
I think I just happened to have my superintendent's report right here. And I will be glad to share this with you. First off, I wanted to say Happy Veterans Day, and like Mr. Kirschner said at the start of the meeting, we're very thankful for our military and our veterans. And I was actually able to attend the Carmel City Veterans Day program, and I got to tell you, it was a very proud day for the superintendent, because the Orchard Park Cubbies were singing, and they just did an outstanding job. We had a Young Artists for Beach grade level, elementary grade level, that was in a poster contest, and the mayor quizzed each student on their picture, and a highlight reel of that was one little girl, she said, "Can you tell me a little about your picture?" And she said, "No." And she said, "Well, can you just tell me what that means, you know, that?" And then she went, "No." And he said, "Do you want the $50, you know, savings bond or whatever it was?" And she was like, so, yeah, she eventually talked to him a little bit, but it was cute. Also, we had the three middle school. Also, we had the three middle school students that won the essay contests, and the essays were just amazing. So very proud of those kids. And then the featured speaker was our own Pete O'Hara. And Pete is a speaker. He's just a gifted speaker. He actually gave the address at Carmel High School this morning, and he was just, just amazing. And, and he served in the artillery and was in charge of the artillery on different campaigns. And, and he really understands and lived the honor that it takes and, you know, the determination it takes to, to be a veteran. And so, you know, I couldn't, you know, it was just one of those days when you just, you know, get back in my vehicle to drive away and went, wow, you know, so proud of, of Carmel Clay Schools and the people in it. So that was, that was amazing. And, you know, just congratulations to everybody involved in that. And if you went through social media today, you just saw all over our district, different programs going on and honoring our vets. And, and everyone has one in common, they play the, the different songs from the different branches of government. And those vets stand up and they salute and stand in attention. And if that doesn't get you, I don't know what would. So just want to add my, my thanks to the veterans and, and, and those different honors that they've had this week. Also, a proud moment, I'm going to, my theme, you're going to pick up on it here, with the Mohawk Trails staff, where they were recognized at the Indiana State House for being a national blue ribbon school. And it was really a nice affair. And they, you know, had, had, you got, you got to bring up to ten people, so we had a whole bunch of teachers for Mohawk Trails and then the principal, assistant principal. And I got to take a picture of them on the stage. And then one of the professional organizations had, you know, some, some food and, and some refreshments there. So it was just a really nice time, you know, just to see a bunch of teachers, you know, get recognized for the hard work they do all the time. So, you know, I walked another time, got my car, my truck, and was driving away going good, you know, good for the Mohawk Trails team, they, they had some great things. I wanted to let you know that the reason that you have a scruffy superintendent is because, as is my tradition, I made a challenge for the No Shave November. And the reason we do that, I do that every year, is to bring attention to men's mental health. And so we've got quite a few folks that are, have taken the challenge, and the challenge is to grow a mustache and be a mo-bro for this month, or to join Bear Sherd's Band of Bearded Brothers and go for the whole scruff. And so, so I apologize in advance for all the mo-bros and bearded brothers out there, they're looking pretty scruffy right now. It's going to be a tough, tough run all the way to December, but we'll, we'll get there. Kind of an interesting story I saw on the news, and Courtney followed up on it, was that we had last Wednesday a Carmel High School student who is also a Lucas Formula Racing Series driver, his name is Jack Dorsey. He donated a racing system that he designed and built himself to Riley Children's Hospital. And so I'm watching the video of this, and this kid is actually sitting in a go-kart, and, and he's doing the, you know, the controls, and there's a screen where he's racing. And, and so, so they put their skills to test on the track, it was made possible through Dorsey's charity, the Anchor Foundation, and ten percent of the money donated to his team goes to the foundation to help at children's hospitals and that Make-A-Wish program. And the really special part of it was that he did that in dedication and memory of his mother who passed away from cancer. So just what a, what a, what a guy. So that was pretty special. Now, close to my own heart, Creekside Middle School Wildcats won the Hamilton County Spell Bowl. So we are the steely-eyed spelling champions of the county. And when I was a, a middle school principal, the Spell Bowl was a big deal. And so happy that the Creekside Wildcats brought it home. And Clay and Carmel Middle tied for third. So a nice show from the CCS middle schools. Boys and girls cross-country, we talked a little bit about sports, but I was able to make it to Laverne Gibson Championship Cross Country Course in Terre Haute, Indiana, and watched our boys and girls compete in the state finals. Much better day than the week before in the driving rain. That is a ferocious course, it's a very difficult course. And our boys placed second, narrowly, narrowly missed the championship there, it was a real tight race. And our girls placed third, and again, did really, really nice job on that. So they were second and third on the course, number one in our hearts, but real proud of their efforts and outstanding seasons that they had. Our Greyhound cheer team, who won the vars division, ended up playing, placing third this weekend at the state championship in the cheer competition. And that qualifies them for nationals, so they'll be heading to nationals. So we're proud of the cheer gals. They did a wonderful job, as always, and they do extremely difficult routines. And I don't know a whole lot about cheerleading, but someone I know that does know about them said Carmel does hard, you know, really hard routines, so I'm sure that's what makes them so competitive. Girls cross, the girls soccer team, I was at Fisher's High School the afternoon, after the races in the morning, I went to Fisher's High School to watch the girls soccer team and had a really grueling defensive match against Noblesville Millers, and Stern Miller's got us, and, and won, won to zero. So the Hounds came in, runner-up at the soccer finals. But Olivia Frey was named the Mental Attitude Award winner. And I always feel so bad for the, the kids that their team doesn't win and then they win it because they're sad because they didn't win the, you know, the state championship, but their family is so proud of them, and that's quite an honor to be picked out as the Mental Attitude Award winner. So Olivia was, was struggling through that, but she's just a champ. So that, and then, of course, the marching Greyhounds, I was able to watch their performance, and they placed second in the state. They were runners-up to the Orioles of Avon by four tenths of a point. And I was just, if you watch those, if you watch those competitions at that level, all the bands are outstanding. And they all have really good marching routines and everything, but when you hear the Carmel band play, there's a definite difference between the other bands and Carmel. The music quality and the sound of their, their performances is just noticeable by everybody. So, and I, I wanted to get the whole experience, so I got there early and watched them take all the pieces of their, their program and pile it up into one end zone in one minute it was set up. They played a tremendous twelve-minute set, they took all of it off. And then I even walked out to the buses to watch them load their stuff back into the, and it's like an anthill, watching an anthill at work. They just, there's a lot of them, and they just, every, every detail is, is planned out. And so I can be proud of them, they are going to compete in the Bands of America National Championship coming up this weekend, we'll see how that goes. I think they'll find four tenths, maybe even five tenths of a point, and maybe bring that one home. Football team, won the sectional championship against Westfield, they're heading to regional up in Homestead. Homestead calls us the Homestead of the South, and I guess we call Homestead the Carmel of the North. We're both blue and gold. And so that's going to be a battle on Friday night. I would love to be there, but unfortunately, I am going to support Amanda Dillon at the State Teacher of the Year banquet, where she placed in the top ten. And so real proud of Amanda, and going to spend some time there. But then there's the bell ringer. And I was trying to think of all the great things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. And I've got to tell you, having our community support us with a sixty-eight point five percent approval rating for the school safety referendum has to be my, my bell ringer. Because the community made a choice on, on that Tuesday that they want Carmel Clay Schools to have the safest schools possible. And because of their support, we're going to be able to put a school resource officer in every school, full-time, all-day, highly-trained Carmel police officer in every one of our schools. We will, which was happening right now, we are working on that process right now with the Carmel Police Department. We will be putting out a, real soon, an RFP request for proposals from mental health providers in the area, and, and work towards getting a contract so that there'll be access to a mental health therapist in every school building in Carmel Clay Schools, at least one. And, you know, and this tool came up from the state legislature, and we were all in the summer advance there at the Carmel Library, we contemplated whether we should do this or not. And what a good decision we made that, that night. And so I just am thankful for our community, I'm thankful for the Carmel SOS group. I met with them when I first, it was like my first day across the river, it seems like, and I called them the Safety Moms, because they want our schools to be safe and they wanted it to be at a very high level. And, and they came out and ran that political action committee to inform our community and make sure everybody knew, and dispelled lots of rumors and misinformation. And those, they were just fantastic. And so my bell ringer is that the community supported that referendum, and now we're going to get the work going, we're going to make it happen, and as efficiently and at as high a level as we possibly can, so that our students and our staff will be as safe as possible, and we'll meet the needs of kids that need support in the most efficient and best way possible. So the only person that's more fired up about me than this is probably Dave Woodward, who, he's, he's still behaving like he won the World Series and pitched the last strikeout. So he's pretty fired up. But it is a, a great thing for our community, it was an important day, and I'm so thankful that it happened in the past. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Well, thank you for the very informative superintendent report. Also, thank you to you and your team for all the efforts on this referendum. I know that you and they were out there along with the pack, and it just amazes me, all the events that you go to in your report, so thank you for that. I will open, if the board members have any questions on superintendent's report. No?
I would, I would just add thank you to you, the board, because you guys came out in mighty voices and were active in this as well. And I appreciate your active on social media, active in putting signs up, and active in going to the polls, and I appreciate your work as well.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, our next school board regular session is November twenty-fifth, followed shortly thereafter by Thanksgiving break. And then December sixteenth, we have a school board regular session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Somewhere.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.